All right, welcome everyone. We're going to call to meeting the San Jose City Council meeting for the afternoon of October 1st. Welcome. Great to have you all here. Tony, would you please start with the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Botra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Suzanne St. John Crane, who gives back to our community in many ways, including as CEO of the American Leadership Forum, and Councilor Foley will tell us more.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm really excited to have Suzanne St. John Crane present our invocation today. If you haven't met her, she is a force. She is a leader among leaders. She serves as the CEO of American Leadership Forum, and I went through that program. It is the most thought-provoking, eye-opening, challenging program that I've ever participated in, and if you ever have the opportunity, you should all participate in it. She's the Executive Director at the national level of American Leadership Forum, where grassroots, grass-top, grass-top leaders from across sectors are joined to raise their consciousness, build relationships, and change systems in service to the common good. Previously, St. John Crane worked in community media for 24 years, having served as the founding Executive Director of Create TV and CMAP. She is the recipient of dozens of regional and national awards for television shows and documentaries she's produced, and was named, no surprise, one of the Silicon Valley's 100 Women of Influence in 2012 by the Silicon Valley Business Journal. She is co-authoring the book A Guide to Human Citizenship: The ALF Way, due out in 2025. Please join me in giving Suzanne a warm welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. Great to see you all today. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and community. I want to invite all of us to settle in for a minute here. Close your eyes, really. Take a deep breath. And take a moment to feel the ground beneath you as you take root in the history, the lessons, the possibility of this place. And breathe. I want to invite us all to set an intention, those at the dais, those in the audience, that the greater good, the needs of our neighbors, will be served by our dialogue and our decisions today. That we employ the highest and best wisdom, prioritizing the "we," not the "me," so that we may co-create an equitable and thriving community. Our American Leadership Forum Fellows Program asks all participants, many of whom are in this room, to invest in building relationships with each other by spending an afternoon sharing our seven-minute stories, the people, places, pain, triumphs, that make us who we are. We level the playing field as the titles and accomplishments melt away, and we move into the realm of our shared humanity. We leave that experience with empathy for others and grace for ourselves. Every person in this room I see today has a seven-minute story. I can't see it, but we can choose to imagine, to be curious, respect, and have empathy for it. So today, I want to call on each of you to summon the capacity to deeply listen, the curiosity to wonder, the courage to consider each other's stories in our decision-making. When you're tempted to interrupt, intervene, undercut, may you have the presence of mind-to-be present and honestly examine yourself. When the temptation is to criticize out of fear or resentment, to finger-point, defaulting to an "us and them" mentality, my invitation is that we pause to see each other's humanity, that we approach our coexistence like a family that disagrees, that wrestles over issues, but in the end, we share a city, we share a community, we share a country and a constitution. So today, we commit to a floor of grace and forgiveness. In this time of extreme divisiveness in our politics that ripples out to so many areas of our lives, may we in this room choose to renew our vows to each other as humans. A few years ago, I joined a group of San Jose leaders in Copenhagen to study public life, thanks to the city of San Jose. An RFP was issued to redesign a public park which families, workers, the homeless, all frequented. An artist responded to an RFP that had been issued and pulled in these super-users as co-creators of his design. On the RFP, he stated his intended project outcome very simply: to create more love. May all of our actions and decisions today be guided by the ultimate outcome: to create a community grounded in equity, our highest possibility, and indeed, love. Thank you.
Thank you so much Suzanne for everything you do in our community. That was a great message to kick off our meeting here. We're going to move on to ceremonial items. Councilmembers Torres and Ortiz, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Filipino-American History Month.
Cohen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cohen and Ortiz. Oh, I was looking at the next one. That's Cohen and Ortiz. And then you're up, Councilmember Torres. I mixed them up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Due to mobility issues, I will be reading my statement from here. Councilmember Ortiz will go down along with the mayor to present the proclamation, but I'm happy to be here to proclaim Filipino-American History Month today. So we'll let our guests come on down. Today is the first day of Filipino-American History Month, which is observed every October in remembrance of the arrival of the first Filipinos on October 1587 in Moro Bay. I am honored to welcome our friends from Filipino-Americans Coming Together in San Jose Coalition, known as FACT SJ, which consists of seven organizations: Lead Filipino, Filipino Youth Coalition, Filipino-American National Historical Society, Santa Clara Valley Chapter BNK, the Filipino-American Cultural and Social Justice School, Malaya South Bay, the Filipino Association of Workers and Immigrants, and Moveable. FACT SJ's mission is to make educational programming accessible, engage Filipino-Americans in civic life, and preserve Filipino-American history in Santa Clara County. They organize fun programs like Pinoy Town Tours, educational workshops and classes, as well as annual FAM celebrations that we would love for you to join. Celebrate Filipino-American History Month FAM with us at our Flag-Raising and Lighting Ceremony at City Hall next Friday, October 11th, at 5:00 p.m. Also, FAM Jam, the biggest Phil Am festival in the South Bay, will be Friday, October 18th, at the Berriessa Flea Market, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. So now I'd like to introduce Dr. Melissa Nivera Lozano, the Ethnic Studies Professor at Evergreen Valley College, to share a few words.
Thank you so much, community members and esteemed guests. October's Filipino-American History Month, History Month, this beautiful thing that was simply an idea between two beautiful people, our Uncle Fred Cordova, Auntie Dorothy Cordova, who were founders of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, and together when they founded the Filipino-American National Historical Society in the early '80s, they recognized, 10 years later, we need to do something to recognize our history. And so in 1992, they were able to have that happen, and by 2009, the U.S. Congress passed it as something that is celebrated here in the United States. I want us to recognize also that Filipino-American History Month, we must settle on the word "history." It is not heritage, it is not Philippine heritage. In the words of my late mentor, Dr. Don Bohudano Mabalon, she says, "History is inclusive of heritage and culture. It's all about our stories, how we changed this beautiful place we live and ourselves in the process, our political struggles, transformations, labor, migration, activism, the impact of imperialism and war victories. Where heritage is more limited, friends, we are more, right, than just our lumpia and pancit. We are more than just that. We have made history, we continue to be history in the making with FACT SJ. We helped build this beautiful place, and so that's what this month is about. Thank you for sharing it with us."
Thank you so much, on behalf of the council. Congratulations, you guys. Appreciate it. Now, I know we were, yes, in the round of applause. Maybe we can get Councilman Cohen in the evening. Everybody, everybody shift down this way. You get him in there? Sure. A little block. Congratulations, you guys. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen and Councilmember Ortiz. And now, Councilwoman Torres, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim Natural Arts and Humanities Month.
I'm American Leadership Forum Class 44, and it's the best one ever. Pam didn't hear that. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Omar Torres, and I'm the Councilmember District III, the Downtown Councilmember for the city of San Jose, downtown San Jose. Today, we as a city proclaim the month of October, National Humanities and Arts Month for the city of San Jose. We get to reflect on the impact to which arts and humanities have in our classrooms, libraries, community centers, and most importantly, the positive impact of our local economy. During National Arts and Humanities Month, we celebrate the power of the arts and humanities that serves to amplify the voices of our community members. San Jose is home to talented muralists, poets, and entertainers, real homegrown creatives who through their experience have honed their craft and shared with us very personal and even vulnerable versions of themselves. A little over 30 years ago today, the Arts and Humanities were celebrated for the first time in 1993 to initiate a campaign to encourage and motivate Americans to explore new facets of the arts and humanities in their lives. Advocates and government officials came together to reestablish the month to have a focused approach in, number one, enabling easier access to the arts at all levels, number two, encouraging more involvement and support for the arts, number three, allow for businesses to show their support, and four, raise awareness about the benefits of the arts and humanities have in our communities and in our lives. Let me thank the entire arts community for sharing your talent. You bring us together, lift us up, and encapsulate the human experience through an artistic language that resonates with all of us. And as you could see here, before I do hand over the proclamation, please, let's give a huge round of applause to our OCA staff and our Arts Commission. They make it happen. So again, Happy National Arts and Humanities Month, everyone. It's a great honor to present this proclamation to the Vice Chair of the Arts Commission, Lynn Rosenthal, who's going to say a few words, and to the staff of the Office of Cultural Affairs.
I'm Lynn Rosenthal, Vice Chair of the San Jose Arts Commission. Thank you, Mayor Mahan and Councilman Torres, wherever he is, and the full city council. This proclamation of October as National Arts and Humanities Month aligns San Jose with our nation's efforts to celebrate the arts while recognizing the significant cultural life and creative vibrancy of San Jose. The arts and humanities bring people together, promoting empathy and lifting us up. I also want to recognize my fellow commissioners, who volunteer and work together to advance the arts sector in San Jose. I also want to thank the Office of Cultural Affairs, staff team that work to ensure that the arts are accessible to and serve all members of our community. This Thursday on October 3rd, the Arts Commission will celebrate art leadership at the National Cornerstone of the Arts Awards Event. This year, we will honor three below theaters for its creative impact: Paul Gonzalez as a luminary artist, the late Rick Holden, and artist Ken Matsumoto as the 2024 Cornerstone of the Arts recipients. Again, thank you, Mayor and council, for your support of the arts, and a special thank you to Councilmen Torres for being the committed council liaison to the Arts Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for being a beautiful one, the arts. It's on behalf of the whole.
Art's pleasure.
We appreciate it. Let's move maybe to the left and the left. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and now I would like to invite Councilmember Foley and Vice Mayor Kamay to join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
And everyone from Eastside Union High School District should come down and stand with us, please. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Foley, and I represent Council District 9. I'm honored here today to be with Vice Mayor Rosemary Kamay to recognize this October as the 79th Annual National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This month, also known as NDEEM, is used to educate the general public on issues that workers with disabilities face, how employers can be more inclusive in their hiring practices, and to commemorate the many contributions of people with disabilities to America's workplace and economy. When this celebration began in 1945 as just a week-long celebration, it was called National Employ the Physically Handicapped Week. What a horrible name. The removal of the word "physically" happened almost 20 years after the first celebration, before Congress officially expanded the week to a month and became the name we know today to acknowledge individuals with all types of disabilities. As disability continues to be an evolving concept, we see it include difficulties in hearing, vision, cognitive function, ambulation, and chronic health issues. Environmental and attitudinal barriers have led to stereotyping, discrimination, and ableism when it comes to the employment process for many of these individuals. I want to share a statistic with all of you. As we continue to grow the economy, we must remember that this cannot be completed without including the talent and drive of individuals with disabilities. People with disabilities constitute the largest minority group in the U.S., making up an estimated 13.5% of the total population. While we have already made great strides toward an environment that advocates for these individuals in the workplace, we must also consider the diversity of this group. This diverse group crosses lines of age, ethnicity, gender, race, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status, all of which contribute further to the inequity of opportunities individuals with disabilities already face. With this proclamation, I want to reaffirm the city of San Jose's dedication to ensuring barrier-free access and opportunities for all. We will continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities. We will continue to ensure that our workplaces promote courteousness and mindfulness of differing needs. Every individual deserves a work environment that provides them the ability to equally participate comfortably and effectively. Today, I'm proud to have Sharon Cavallaro, Director of Special Services, and Aaron Lott, Coordinator of Special Services, from the Eastside Union High School District Adult Transition Program, to accept this proclamation. The Eastside Union High School District Adult Transition Program is designed to support young adults with disabilities as they transition from school to adulthood. This program offers various services and educational opportunities tailored to meet individual needs, including life skills training, vocational education, and community-based instruction. Participants engage in activities that promote independence and prepare them for employment, further education, and community involvement. Please join us in giving Aaron Lott a warm welcome as he says a few words before Mayor Mahan presents the proclamation.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley, Mayor, City Council. We are very honored and excited to be here today. This is a big moment for us. We've come a long way from where we were when we started this 25, 30 years ago to where we are today. I want to thank you for recognizing the Adult Transition Program during Disability Employment Awareness Month. I'd also like to thank Francisco Valenzuela from the San Andreas Regional Center for recommending us for this honorable recognition today. I'm proud to introduce two outstanding representatives of our program, Mr. Jonah Thompson, who is gainfully employed at Walgreens, and Ms. Monica Barajas, who is currently in work training at Tolseria Mi Canaval. These students exemplify the collaborative efforts between families, schools, and local communities. I personally want to thank Eastside Union High School District Superintendent Mr. Glenn Vanderzey and Director of Special Services at Eastside Union High School District, Dr. Sharon Cavallaro, for their support and student-first leadership that have made all of this possible. I'd also like to acknowledge our invaluable community partners, including Walgreens, Costco, Tesla, whose unwavering support has been not only supportive but instrumental in empowering our students to succeed and become independent contributing members of our society. We are deeply honored to have Jonah and Monica, two shining examples of our program's success, to have them share their experiences with you today. I introduce to you Jonah Thompson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonah Thompson. I'm a proud former student of Eastside Union High School District Adult Transition Program. I currently work at Walgreens, and I like to share how this program has helped me in my journey. Through the Adult Transition Program, I gained valuable skills like times management, communication, personal responsibilities, skills that have prepared me for my job with the program's support. I participated in the San Andreas Regional Center Paid Internship Program. I learned on the job while earning a paycheck. Now, I'm directly employed by Walgreens. My dream is to one day be a YouTube influencer and live in a place of my own. I'm also managing my own bills like rent and my cellphone, and I'm learning to drive, to get my driver's license. It feels amazing to be independent and to take care of myself. Thank you all for your time and support.
Thank you, Jonah, and congratulations on a great job. Now, Monica Barajas.
Hello, my name is Monica. Hello, my name is Monica Barajas. I am a four-year student at Eastside Auto Program or ATP. I like the ATP because the program teaches me life skill and always teaches me to be resourceful and self-sufficient, and that makes me more dependent and gives me more confidence in myself.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the proclamation. Everybody move it. One more. Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our guests and the council members who had ceremonial items today. We're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I'm not seeing any. Okay. We will be adjourning today's meeting in memory of Grandmaster Kue Hui Pham, who sadly passed away on July 30th of this year. Grandmaster Pham taught Taekwondo alongside his family, teaching students not only to strengthen their bodies, but to excel academically and give back to the community. Councilwoman Dwan, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. As we gather here today, it is with a heavy heart that we adjourn this meeting in a memory of a truly remarkable individual, Grandmaster Kue Hui Pham, who passed away on July 30th, 2024. Grandmaster Pham was not just a master of martial arts. He was a beacon of inspiration for countless students and families in our community. Together with his family, he dedicated his life to sharing the value of discipline, compassion, and moral integrity through martial arts. His passion was evidenced in every lesson he taught, guiding his students not only in their martial pursuit, but also in their personal growth and academic achievement. Under his mentoringship, many young individuals flourish, learning the importance of hard work and respect. His commitment to their development extends far beyond the dojo. His commitment also instilled in them a sense of purpose, a strong moral compass. His commitment also instilled in them a sense of purpose, a strong moral compass, preparing them to excel in all areas of life. Grandmaster Pham's legacy is woven into the fabric of San Jose. His influence had made our city not just a place to live but a thriving community, enriched by the value he championed. We are all better for having known him and been touched by his dedication. As we remember Grandmaster Pham today, let us honor his memory by continuing to uphold the principle he lived by: striving for excellence, showing compassion to others, and fostering a spirit of community. He will be deeply missed, but his impact will resonate for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you for that beautiful tribute, Councilmember. I'm going to move on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report today at a closed session.
Okay, thank you, Nora. Appreciate it. Next is the consent calendar. I'm aware of two items council members will poll. That's two-point-five and two-point-ten. Did we have any others? Okay, then we will go to Councilmember Foley first for a City Council travel report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my opportunity to share with you what we learned when we were on our delegation trip to Dublin. On September ninth through the twelfth, a delegation from the City of San Jose went to Dublin, Ireland, to further our thirty-eight-year sister-city relationship. I'm a director with a national organization, Sister Cities International, which was established in nineteen fifty-five by President Eisenhower as a way to establish opportunities to create peace and goodwill throughout the world. Councilmember Jimenez served in this capacity prior to me. These trips are important to create an opportunity to learn best practices and to look for opportunities to pursue economic opportunities where our cities can mutually benefit. Those in attendance included Councilcolleagues Vice Mayor Kamai, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Jimenez. City staff were also present: City Manager Jennifer McGuire, Deputy City Manager Jennifer Shembry, Budget Director Jim Shannon, City Clerk Tony Tabor, and International Affairs Manager Joe Hedges. And we were also joined by representatives from the San Jose-Dublin Sister City Program, which is a pretty vibrant Sister City program, and that included Kimberly Brady, Patty Roberts, Pam Kelly, Jim Bell, Jacqueline Bogard, Brendan O'Flaherty, and Amanda Rosson. This was not just a vacation. This was a hard-working delegation. We were in meetings four days with a lot of activities in between. Over the course of the four working days, we met with several departments in the City of Dublin and toured areas of interest that our hosts wanted us to experience. There are many similarities between Dublin and San Jose. Many of their issues and area of concerns are ours as well. High cost of housing, homelessness, high vacancy rates are among them. The city is run, much like ours, by a chief executive officer called Richard Shakespeare. Never asked him if he was related to Shakespeare or not, who is the equivalent of our city manager. They have sixty-three city council members and the Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor presides over the council meetings. Councilmembers are elected to five-year terms with no term limits. The Lord Mayor is selected from among the council. Meetings, you'll be interested in this, have a specific start and stop time, six-thirty p.m. to nine-thirty p.m., and I think they only meet once a month, but I forgot that note. Further interest to the council might be that each council member has one to one-and-a-half minute to speak on each item, and the mayor controls the microphone. So the Lord Mayor has the opportunity to turn off the microphone if they so choose, and I guess he yields that power on occasion. Some of the city staff presentations we heard were from the Planning Department, Economic Department, Department of Transportation, Finance and Budget, Blue Zones, Smart Cities, Tourism, and we learned about the portal. The portal is, it's like in Star Trek, the portal, where those in Dublin can view those in New York and Manhattan and lifetime. It was really, they had some issues with it, but it was really interesting. Some people want to bring a portal to San Jose. We learned that seventy-five percent of the Dublin city budget is paid for by the federal government. Dublin serves as the capital of Ireland, and their parliament, known as the Dal, meets there. The police or Garda are funded not as part of the city's budget, but rather it's a national police force. Property taxes are a new source of revenue, but all properties are not yet required to pay these taxes, as they've put this process in place where a consultant comes in, analyzes the value of your property, and then figures out what property taxes may be paid. So there are a lot of very valuable properties, some of them in the dockland areas, which I'll talk about in a minute, that are not yet paying property taxes. They were particularly envious of our TOT taxes and wondered how they could implement these taxes on their hotel occupancies. While there are many similarities between Dublin and San Jose, Dublin has fought a long battle for independence, which influences the city and country to this date. In nineteen sixteen, the Easter Rising led to successful negotiations with Britain to create a free Irish state. However, many involved in the Easter Rising were not satisfied with the settlement, and a civil war ensued, pitting brother against brother. This civil war was a little over a hundred years ago, and it still remains on Dubliners' minds. Here's some highlights of our trip. And I'm taking a little longer than I might normally. I've actually never presented this type of a report before, but I wanted to share with you that this was not a vacation, that we spent time really learning about Ireland and where we might be able to work together, and some of the similarities and differences that we had, and there was a lot of opportunity to be collegial with the people who represent their departments as well. Among some of the highlights, we toured the Irish Immigration Museum, known as the Epic. This Irish Immigration Museum focuses on the history of Irish immigration and the global impact of the Irish diaspora. It serves as a cultural institution but also as a testament to the global Irish community's resilience, adaptability, and contribution to the world history. We toured a ship called the Jeanne Johnston that sailed to America several times, bringing immigrants looking for a better life by avoiding the potato famine. We were invited to attend a private reception at an area called the Dogpatch Labs, which is leading startup hub and co-working space. It is a central place for innovation, offering collaborative environment for entrepreneurs, investors, and innovators. Dogpatch Labs plays a pivotal role in nurturing Ireland's entrepreneurial talent and fostering connections between startups, investors, and established businesses. It's located in the Docklands. The Docklands is the high-tech hub in Dublin. We were invited to attend by the Lord Mayor, James Gagan, and they had a fireside chat with OpenAI in attendance and the Dublin City Council. We also heard presentations from city staff on the environment and transportation. One particular note that was of interest to me was their pedestrian fatalities on their streets. There's a lot of people on their streets with a lot of bicyclists, a lot of cars, and a lot of walkers. But in the last year, they only reported eight fatalities on their streets, which is remarkable considering the amount of traffic they have. This shows to me that it's because their streets are so narrow that people really have to pay attention, and that's why we look at narrowing some of our busier corridors to slow streets down. Course is Vision Zero Chair, I really had to hone in on that and pay attention to that. They like to, they work on preserving their architectural buildings. You can imagine a city that is so several hundred years old, they have a lot of really wonderful buildings, but there are also some are very rundown. And so they have efforts to preserve them, but they use drones to inspect the buildings that are dangerous to go inside and look at. We found that fascinating. I'm sure my fellow colleagues have things that they'd like to say, too. The Lord Mayor hosted us at his mansion house, where he lives with his three children and his wife. And one of the initiatives that he is working on is to create a city accessible to all residents regardless of their disabilities. That was of particular interest to me. He challenges San Jose to be that city as well, and I've asked him for their templates so they can share with us what that looks like. His goal is to be the most accessible city in Europe. We also attended soccer, which was really fun. It was a national game that we saw, a national match between Ireland and Greece, and sadly, Ireland doesn't have a very good team, and they lost, but it was still loads of fun. The next day, we went to the Dublin Chamber of Commerce to learn about issues facing their small businesses, which are not unlike the issues facing our small businesses. Ireland suffered economically in the mid-ots. That's what they call it, the aughts. We were experiencing our own financial crisis then in two thousand eight to two thousand ten, but theirs was much worse. Theirs took longer to recover, and they still suffer from that. Of course, the pandemic hurt them as well. We also met with leaders from the federal government program called Enterprise Ireland. Enterprise Ireland is a program that focuses on funding startups that are involved in the export business. They fund initially funding from three hundred, I'll give it in dollars because they gave it in euros, three hundred and forty thousand to the three hundred and ninety-one thousand converted in the first round. That followed an evening reception at a famous gallery that was actually a fundraiser for their library foundation. The next day, we actually toured City Hall, which is this big, old, glorious building where Easter Rising had some bullets, you could see bullet holes still in the statues that continue, that exist today. I think they leave that as a memory to remind everyone of where they've been. They have, as I said, sixty-three city council members, but they have these things called party rooms, and it's not, they don't just have two parties, Democrat and Republicans, they have conservatives, they have labor. I forget how many they said they have, but they have all these little rooms, and the bigger the party, the bigger the room, and that's where they do their discussions, they have their caucuses. We toured a street called Fourteen Henrietta Street, which is an old, very historic museum in Dublin that has been restored. It was initially an old Georgian house owned by wealthy individuals who then moved to London to serve in the government. After that time, they turned into tenements, became rundown, and they housed hundreds of people pretty much in squalor. But it has been restored to give us the experience and the feel of what it was like to live in these tenements, and these tenements were occupied as recently as nineteen seventy-nine, I believe. Actually, there's a city council committee called the Dublin City Council Cultural Company that supports those efforts. So these are some of the cultural things that we can learn from the city. Dublin, Ireland, and the City of San Jose have many similarities. I've already talked about a lot of them, so I'm going to skip forward a little bit. Dublin has a significant presence of global tech companies. If you're not aware, including Google, Facebook, Amazon, and Microsoft, they serve as the major European headquarters for many of these firms occupying the Docklands. The Docklands is this reclaimed area that is just stunning to envision, all the beautiful developments that've gone up, all the housing that is down there, and the commercial buildings that are down there, and people are actually working at the offices down there. They're not commuting in from the countryside. They have a diverse population. They have a high cost of living, as we do in San Jose. Their housing costs are expensive. Average rents in Dublin is twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, for a much smaller unit than you would get here. They have really a vibrant cultural scene, part historic but part brought on by the new tech execs and tech individuals they have there. Dublin is the center of innovation, and San Jose is the center of innovation and the entrepreneurial spirit. In summary, Dublin and San Jose are both major technology hubs with multicultural populations, strong educational institutions, and high costs of living. While they differ in climate and historical context, both cities play crucial roles in the global tech industry and have vibrant, growing urban cultures. I'd like to publicly thank the mayor for allowing me to lead this delegation. I'd like to thank our wonderful host, led by Neil and Kira from the City of Dublin, and our own Joe Hedges for helping to coordinate all of the details. In a couple of years, it will be our turn to host Dublin for the fortieth-year anniversary of our sister-city relationship in twenty twenty-six, and in twenty twenty-seven, we will commemorate seventy years of a sister-city relationship with Okayama, Japan, our very first sister-city. With that, I conclude my statement and ask any council members or city managers to add their thoughts.
All right. Thank you for that comprehensive report, Councilwoman Foley. We'll go to Vice Mayor Kamai.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Foley, and thank you for your leadership. This was a very, very educational experience. I'd never been on anything like this before, but there are a lot of parallels, and you've covered quite a bit. It was very comprehensive. The one thing that I found a little bit sort of as a distinguishing factor between Dublin and us is that if you go into the chambers where, you know, the sixty-three council members and the Lord Mayor are, you have twelve seats in the corner for the public, and you have to, you know, like, call ahead so that they allow you to sit there. Twelve, right? If you're part of the media, there's another couple of seats in another corner that you can sit at. So I thought, wow, how different access is in the United States versus Ireland. And to me, that was, you know, some of the differences that we saw, but definitely a lot of similarities, and the innovation zone. I mean, I brought back sort of ideas of other things that we can do, and I hope that we can move on some of the innovative ideas. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Did anyone else want to quickly chime in? I think we covered it. That was a very comprehensive report. Thank you, Councilwoman Foley. You caught my attention with the Lord Mayor title. He's got a gold chain, I've seen, a mansion, I mean, doing something right. No, to Vice Mayor's point, we're obviously a very democratic society, something we're very, very proud of, and interesting to see that parallel. Well, thank you for the report out on the trip. Sounds like we learned a lot. Okay, so let's go on. I know we had one other item polled. It was item two-ten, if I'm not mistaken. Councilor Batra, did you want to comment on the Measure T status report?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be as colorful as Councilmember Pam Foley did, but it's much more of a bread and butter issue for our community. I do want to comment on the Measure T. I pulled this item out because this is a pretty important report. It is the biggest bond measure the City of San Jose has done to date, which is six-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. It was a very well-done program because the community voted, under the tough circumstances, to still fund this bond measure. Why they did do that? Because they were told what they were going to get for this. This has changed the face of the City of San Jose. We have more fire stations, so we have better public safety. We have police stations, fire academies, so we are able to make our city safer with this program. We have also changed in there that we have the EOC Center, which got built with the six-hundred-and-fifty million dollar. We still have work under progress. We also have the DOT We also have our the DOT Department repaved many, many of the roads. And all of that detail is available in the report. But I wanted to highlight it to the public because public knows when their tax dollars are taken. But the public is not getting this report to see all the stuff they got back for it. And I wanted to highlight the great work done by our city, by our Public Works, DOT, and all the other groups. I would encourage everybody in the city to actually go and look on the website for this report because there are many nuggets in this report which make our city safer, more vibrant, gives us the drivable roads, which we have to need those 2,500 miles of the roads, which are all getting repaved, resurfaced. And those are very key issues for every one of us to know. So I want to thank everybody who's involved in championing this measure, which was done in 2018. And I want to thank all the city employees who are making these projects become a reality. There's still more work to be done, but the progress to date is very impressive. I want to thank and acknowledge everybody on that work. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate you pulling the item to flag that. Measure T's definitely been a big success story. Want to thank, of course, our voters for trusting us with their tax dollars and city staff from DOT to Public Works and many others have done a tremendous job of using those dollars to deliver very meaningful improvements for our residents. So thanks for highlighting that. Do we have a motion or any other items that?
We will.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. Do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay. Come back to the council. I don't see any hands.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. We're onto item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Do not have a report today.
Great. Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, we're onto item 3.3, Adoption of Statement of Policy and City Council Questions for the Perspective Director of Finance. There's no report. Hopefully, everybody has read the
Move approval.
Statement. Okay. Great. And I'll just ask one. Actually, we'll go to public comment first, and I'll have one very brief question before we vote.
I have no comments on this item.
Okay. Great. Jennifer, I just wanted to ask, and I think it's largely reflected here, but I want to make sure through the interview process that we really dig into procurement and use of technology and automation. I think there's a reference to that in there. But if you could say just a couple of words on the importance of speeding up processes, making them more efficient, using technology, and maybe just give the council confidence that that's something we'll be looking for in this new director.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. Question seven is getting at that, but we will actually dive in more deeply during the actual interview panel discussions on that and my vetting of the candidates, especially in procurement. We've had a lot of areas of improvement needed in procurement, and we've made some strides in that, but I think we can do better. And because it really does affect our overall service delivery system when we're slow in our procurement, and we need to continue to modernize it. But definitely need to modernize and implement other systems that make us more efficient and effective. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your focus there, something a priority for me, and I assume all of my colleagues. Okay, I don't see any hands, so I think we already had a motion. Why don't we vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you, Tony. We're onto item 5.1, which is the summary vacation of a number of streets that are within the Guadalupe Gardens area. We will see if there's any public comment. I don't believe there's a staff presentation.
Yes, I have a public comment from Batman of San Jose.
All right.
Hi. I go with Batman of San Jose. I'm a local advocate. I've been working with the unhoused and homeless community in San Jose for the past five years now. And the Headings Encampment, the area where the vacation of streets will be happening is rather large. We've been through the whole encampment clearance process multiple times in this area. I believe the last time this happened was 2022. About 200, 250 people there. There's still about that many people there. I understand that there's a lot of pressure from the FAA to vacate this area, and there's also a motion to put in a park there. I would just like to ask that any further encampment clearances be postponed until we can get a safe sleep site or something similar in place. I know there's been a lot of discussion about East Taylor Street, Tully Road, Watson Park, Kelly Park, Lee Long Street, and Willow Street. I think that if these further clearances are going to happen, it would be best to move people to these locations directly first, like happened underneath the 87 along Santa Clara Street. I've seen a lot of success with that. And I think following that model of moving people directly to housing instead of removing people would be very helpful. Yeah. I think just in total, like, it would be best to hold off on closing down streets and moving people until there's a solid plan in place for where people should go. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to council.
Great. Thank you. Coming back to the council. So again, on item 5.1. Okay. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you, Tony. We're onto item 8.1, Establishment of the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District. You all recall, we took up this item recently. I noticed it come back to the council a couple of times. Tony, do we have any public comment?
I have no comments for 8.1.
All right. Coming back to the council. Great. We had a motion from Candela's, and since he's got part of Tully Road, we'll give the second to Councilwoman Dewan, but thanks for your efforts, Councilwoman Jimenez. Not seeing any hands, we'll go to item 8.1. I'm sorry, we'll vote on item 8.1.
I still am waiting on one person to vote.
I think we're still waiting on one vote, folks. There we go.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Great. And wonderful festival out there this weekend. I don't know, Councilmember?
Yeah, Mayor, we were out having mochi donuts, dancing. There was an Aoi fashion show. It was awesome.
Yeah, a lot of energy out on Tully Road. It's great to see. All right, we're onto our final agendized item, item 8.2, which is the downtown San Jose Office Incentives. We have a staff presentation, so whenever Nancy and Nathan are ready, take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Nancy Klein, Director of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. And I'm here with Nathan Donato Weinstein, Downtown Manager. Downtowns, while relatively small in geographic area, are immensely valuable. Downtowns concentrate key clusters of housing, public space, businesses, art, culture, sports, and transit within walking distance. As such, the density of downtown and the proximity between work and play drive tax revenue, particularly in property tax, transient occupancy tax, and sales tax. And these resources are often spread beyond the boundaries of downtown. We know our downtown flourishes on weekends. What downtown lacks is a critical mass of daytime population. The proposed downtown office incentive will provide two tools for staff, building owners, brokers, and businesses to encourage yet more businesses to locate in the downtown. I'll now turn the presentation over to Nathan to explain the program in more detail.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Really appreciate it. Those of you on CED Committee have seen this bubble chart before. I really like it because it shows just how unique our downtown is, combining all of these different food groups that really feed off of each other to drive a sense of vibrancy when they're working well. Today's recommendation really zeroes in on the bubble in the bottom left and really asks, how can we help boost our office market? And it comes after council-directed efforts to grow our housing stock, enhance our ground floor retail ecosystem, and support the arts and refresh public spaces. So why do we need to focus on office? Well, you know, there are so many reasons. As Nancy already kind of suggested, office workers are important economic drivers. We often think of them as propelling our ground floor economy, and that's very true. But office workers also spend on business-to-business services. And that dynamic in turn supports a lot of jobs. In fact, for every professional office job attracted, we generate another job in the region, which is what economists call the economic multiplier effect. More office workers also means more daytime foot traffic, improving the perception of safety and activity. And then the other thing is the importance to our public investments in downtown, like transit infrastructure. Office jobs really make those systems work a lot better. And of course, downtown is where you can co-locate near housing, near our amenities, and drive that work, live, play ecosystem that we all want. So about our office market, you know, downtown's office market is relatively small. It's about 11 million square feet. That's much smaller than our R and D and industrial markets, which are concentrated in North San Jose and Edenvale. But it's a really important and unique cluster of industries in our downtown, consisting of professional services like legal, accounting, real estate consulting, information technology, and civic tenants. And it's really important as kind of a signifier of our city's economy overall. But the reality is, our office market downtown is just still really struggling after COVID, much more than our larger R and D and industrial markets. Downtown office leasing has dropped sharply since 2019, with a vacancy rate now around 31%. We were as low as 11 or 12% heading into the pandemic. And there's lots of reasons for this, and most of them are beyond our control, right? So there's a lot more competition for space from other submarkets in the region. Corporate appetites for real estate have shrunk, and then a lot more space has come online downtown before it's been leased. We have seen some new leases over the last couple of years, including some pickups from other neighborhoods like Shutterfly and Airbnb. But the overall trajectory continues to be, quite frankly, lackluster, as you can see from the chart on the bottom of the slide. So what is the solution? You know, cities don't have direct control over office leasing. And to be clear, the biggest thing we can do to enhance office leasing is actually to enhance and improve the urban experience for everyone, whether that's office workers, residents, and visitors. And that's a big part of what businesses tell us, is to make it cleaner, safer, more fun. And thanks to you all and our private partners, San Jose is making some really good progress here with investments from the city and private sector. So the slide shows a few things. The Downtown Association and the P-Bid have launched the Social Impact Team, expanded Groundworks Clean and Safe in 2023. Our Police Department launched the Community Service Officer Program. There's increased PD walking beats, more events, activations, not to mention new and improved parks. We still have work to do, but these initiatives are making a difference. So that brings us to incentives. What is their role? In the context of our proposal today, I'll just highlight a couple key objectives. First is, as we're doing all this great stuff in downtown, how can we help generate interest in office opportunities, assisting our brokers and property owners in getting back on the radar of tenants who are in the market? And there are office tenants in the market out there. Brokerages, oops, we're going forward. Brokerages report a slow but steady increase in office demand in Silicon Valley. And we need to get back on the shopping list. Second is to remove barriers for businesses by lowering costs. Depending on the tenant's unique needs, that cost savings can make a difference in their decision-making. And in so doing, you make downtown more competitive relative to other submarkets. And lastly is that this program actually can, over time, generate revenue for the city by building up our pipeline of tenants who will eventually convert into paying customers, so to speak, once the free period ends. So now we're at this slide, which is our incentive proposal, which is pretty simple. Qualifying office tenants would receive two years of free monthly parking for their employees in four city-owned garages, as well as an exemption to the business tax for two years. But like any good government program, we have some criteria, and those are showing on the screen right now. So to qualify, the tenant would need to be new to downtown and sign a minimum size of lease of 2,500 square feet, or they could also buy property of 2,500 square feet or more. So owner occupiers could qualify under this program. Also, I'll be very clear that this initiative is targeting office uses. So that's things like general office, financial services, office-based research and development. We do have other things to support ground floor retail and dining, like the storefronts grants program. And what we're hearing from small business owners is that they need more customers. Tenants additionally would need to show a minimum four-year commitment to downtown. And for the parking benefit, the parking passes would be allocated at a kind of rate of two passes per 1,000 square foot leased. And currently, our city-owned garages have plenty of weekday capacity to accommodate this program. And finally, this would be a time-limited, two-year program. So want to take a look at what this could mean for tenants? The slide shows three example tenants that differ in size. And for the larger tenant on the right, the combined savings of free parking and tax exemptions clearly provide a substantial benefit. But even the minimum-sized tenant, someone who would lease 2,500 square feet, would save around $12,000 in parking over the program period. And, you know, for the city, this is revenue that we're not receiving currently. So after the two years are up, that business would then start paying the full freight of the parking and business tax as long as they stay. So, you know, these values are not millions of dollars. They are not going to cause a tenant to break a lease and rush downtown, as much as we would love that. But it can help even the scales out a bit and help open up a conversation about taking a look downtown. And the two program elements, the parking and the business tax, are designed to work together to offer a larger value. The free parking is clearly the bigger-ticket item, but not every tenant will need or want free parking. And so the tax relief can be useful for other tenants. So looking at the big picture, you know, this is really just one tool to support office leasing efforts downtown. There's no single magic bullet, but rather sustained efforts to improve our quality of life and strategically lower costs and create a more business-friendly environment. And that's so that we are ready to catch the market as it recovers. In conclusion, approval today is just the start. We'll be working on program implementation with our partners and getting ready for a January launch. The key focus will be outreach to brokers, ensuring they have clear materials to promote this to their clients. Staff will continue to engage with existing tenants in downtown, office, and retail to support their success. And we'll report back in June to the CED Committee with an early progress report as part of our annual downtown update. Finally, I want to make sure you all know that, as required by state law, any incentive valued at over $100,000 any incentive valued at over $100,000 will go through a public hearing and disclosure process and be posted to our website. So with that, thank you so much for your time, and Nancy and I are available for your questions.
Great. Thank you both for the report and your work on this. Very excited to see this move forward. And Nathan, I think you highlighted a lot of reasons to be for this, but one that stuck out to me was the data point around the average office worker in a downtown spending nearly $200 per week in the vicinity of their office. That's $200 per worker per week going to local businesses and stimulating the local economy, just as one good reason to do this. We're going to go to public comment now, and then we'll come back to the council for discussion.
Hi, I'm going to call your names. First person who gets down to the microphone can speak. This is no particular order. I have five cards, so come on down and then take a seat on the front row while you wait your turn. I have Blair Carson, Tomoyo Yoshinaga, Alex Stedinsky, Chris Shea, and Brendan Rosson. Just, it doesn't matter what order, just.
Any order is fine. Just come on up, and you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Tomoyo Yoshinaga. I am a bar owner of Haberdasher in the Sofa District and Cash Only, just a couple of blocks away. I support this initiative to get more people into the downtown core. Haberdasher's been open for 14, going on 15 years. So we fought through COVID and opened Cash Only in the midst of it. And it made it very clear that without people in downtown, our businesses suffer. It's important that you continue to find ways to motivate businesses to come downtown so that we can justify reinvesting into the downtown even further. In fact, we're opening a third bar just half a block away. And having more people downtown would definitely help. The spending that they would do, like you said, $200 per person, would help us to expand our business, hire more people, serve more people, and expand those businesses into more hours where we can serve all day and hit those different marks each part of the day rather than just in the evening. I encourage you to support this and any other efforts to bring more businesses and more residents into the downtown core.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, sorry, I'm nervous. I've never done this. I'm just going to read what I wrote. So I said, hello, my name is Blair Carson. I am the sole owner of Page Boy, a salon located on Post Street between First and Market. I'm also part of the SJDA. I'm here today to express my support for the downtown incentive program. As a small business owner, I would have loved this opportunity and believe so many others would have and could still benefit from this. Our downtown area is the heart of our city, rich in history, culture, and potential. However, to unlock its full potential, we must create an environment that attracts and supports a diversity of small businesses. I was one of the lucky businesses to survive COVID, but it took a lot of grit, a full clientele, with a ton of support, a different business structure than most of the businesses in my district, and probably a little bit of stubbornness on my part. It has been sad to watch so many businesses close and leave, leaving us with more vacant storefronts, which caused blight and ghost town type of feeling. I believe if we attract, incentivize, educate, and help new businesses to come downtown and open storefronts, we could become a bustling, beautiful downtown that represents the diversity of our beautiful city. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy. They generate jobs, foster innovation, and create a unique character that larger corporations simply cannot replicate. By incentivizing these businesses to establish their roots downtown, we can stimulate economic growth, enhance foot traffic, and rejuvenate our community spirit. This is something I feel very passionately about. I could go on and on about this, but I'll end with this. Downtown San Jose is open for business. Let's help make it a place that represents our entire city and community. I would like to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to speak about this and for your continued efforts to revitalize our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Alex Stedinsky. I'm the CEO of the San Jose Downtown Association, a proud partner in advocating for downtown businesses for decades. First, I want to thank Nancy Klein and Nathan Donato Weinstein for a really well-made presentation. It really wraps up everything that we believe in. I'm here to express our enthusiastic support for the downtown incentive program because of its transformative potential for our region. This program will serve as a strategic initiative to invigorate our city's core by driving economic activity through innovation and job growth. It will bring more people to our downtown to attend our amazing arts, sports, and cultural activities and to dine in our exceptional restaurants. This program is one important piece in the puzzle to revitalize our downtown neighborhood and to enhance the quality of life for our residents. I would like to thank the mayor and council for your leadership on this and many efforts to revitalize downtown. I respectfully urge you to support and prioritize the downtown incentive program for a more dynamic and attractive San Jose. The Downtown Association is eager to collaborate on this initiative, and we reiterate our commitment to making San Jose a thriving hub for residents, businesses, and visitors. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Chris Shea, and I'm the senior vice president for Government Affairs at Shark Sports Entertainment and co-chair of the newly formed San Jose Downtown Association Advocacy Committee. I share Alex's commitment and enthusiasm for the downtown incentive program, while office space and arts, sports, and destination tourism may seem like separate industries, they are not. We count on our office colleagues to fill up the art galleries, arenas, and theaters and make the experience economy thrive. This in turn makes downtown a thriving place for visitors to come and enhance the benefits of having office space in our downtown and for our new residents that will call downtown home. All three efforts are intertwined, office, housing, and destination tourism, and each makes the other better. By incentivizing businesses to locate into our downtown, we can reinvigorate these older buildings and ensure that the thriving arts and sports scene remain a bright spot in our economy. While not all that we need to accomplish, this is an important part of the effort to lift our downtown economy up. I respectfully urge and support and prioritize the downtown incentive program for a more dynamic and alternative San Jose. The Downtown Association is eager to collaborate on this initiative, and we reiterate our commitment to making San Jose a thriving hub for residents, business, and visitors for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Thank you for your time. I'm here to express San Jose Jazz's support for the San Jose Downtown Incentive Program. We do have a caveat regarding the memo from Mayor Mahan, council members Torres, Davis, and Jimenez. We suggest a modification. While we believe free reduction programs such as this can be effective in the short term, what is fundamentally and mentally more important to attracting businesses is the development of a vibrant and inspiring downtown. There are obvious reasons why San Jose employers such as UBS and PWC have decided to relocate out of downtown to Santana Row. It's the amenities. We recommend that the memo's requested report analyze the potential for redirection of revenues generated by future downtown businesses participating in this program into a downtown amenities development fund. For context, the Bay Area News Group and joint venture Silicon Valley's most recent survey of 1,802 Bay Area residents with a 2.5% margin of error asked residents directly, why don't you spend more time in these downtowns, San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose? Perhaps unsurprising for San Francisco, the biggest reason at 57% of respondents was too many unhoused people. For San Jose, the biggest reason at 76% was, don't have a reason to visit. 76% of respondents said, don't have a reason to visit. This far out strips, don't feel safe, at 13%, and too dirty, at 9%. Why are we remaining focused on the wrong thing? Our city seems to pride itself on being some sort of forward-thinking, data-driven enterprise. Why are we ignoring the data? Thank you.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for coming to speak. Appreciate your comments, especially when I think our small business owners who have hung in there through a lot. And we very much want to support you in growing here and creating that vibrant downtown. Why don't we turn to Councilor Torres to start?
Good afternoon. Thank you. And thank you to those small businesses who came in and our San Jose Sharks for coming out to support this important incentive. As the council member for downtown, I know how important it is for our town to be lively, not just during the evenings and weekends, but throughout the work week as well. I want to take a moment to thank city staff for putting together the downtown office incentive, which we hope will eradicate our high office vacancy rate here in our downtown core. And talk about our downtown being so resilient, right? Our downtown continues to thrive, yes, during the weekend and during the evenings, but it's thriving. And this is why a first-of-its-kind competitive incentive is important. Having a bustling downtown during the week is key to supporting our local shops and restaurants, and here salons, of course. If we have daytime foot traffic, the small businesses will come. Also, a handful of companies are bringing back their employees to the office. Now is a perfect time to bring more office tenants into our downtown. This incentive will help long-established businesses stay but also thrive during the weekday, not just in the evenings or weekends. Again, the downtown office incentive program is a big part of that solution. I would like my colleagues to support the memo I co-authored along with Mayor Mahan, council member Davis, and Jimenez. Our memo urges our city to report back on the effectiveness of this program before it expires, to see if the program should be extended. And with this incentive, we are telling our stakeholders and potential investors that downtown is open for business. You knew I had to throw it in there. And with that, I motion to approve item 8.2 and to include the memo that myself, the mayor, council members Davis and Jimenez wrote. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Let's go to Councilor Batra.
Thank you for that proposal. And I've been discussing with the OED about these things. I agree in general that we want to do everything possible to revitalize the downtown. And the vacancy rate of 31% in the office space is a major drawback. We need to fill that out. But I do have some questions relating to the impact of this decision on some other parts of the city. The first and foremost question is that are these businesses going to be new to San Jose or they can be relocations from other parts?
Councilmember, thank you for that question. The program is really designed to capture interest from tenants who are kind of in the market looking for office space. You know, we don't think, we think these incentives are valuable, but what they're kind of doing is allowing downtown to compete a little bit better with other submarkets. With incentive programs, we really don't want to poach from other areas, right? But we do want downtown to better compete, and we think this will help us do that.
Yeah, I agree that it may or may not be sufficient to poach, but somebody could be reaching a time for renewal of their lease in their thing. And I think it's a great incentive for bringing business from outside. It really doesn't help us too much. If you take a D-10 customer, moves on to the downtown. So I would like that this should be limited or restricted to the new businesses coming to San Jose, not D-10, not D-9. New business to San Jose. Then I think it makes it that, yes, we are getting growth out of this incentive. A relocation doesn't do us any good.
If I can just jump in, councilmember. I think one thing is important with these incentives and why the staff went this route is traditionally, we look at these as, you know, in the world of economic development, we're first focused on retention of our existing businesses and then expansion of businesses, which a lot of San Jose companies need different things to achieve that expansion. And then we look at attraction. So the staff is always out looking for companies that may want to come to San Jose and go downtown, but they're working with businesses throughout the city on a variety of opportunities to expand their business. So there could be a business, say in District 6, that needs more of an urban environment to grow. Those employees want to be downtown. There could be opportunities, you know, where companies move out of downtown as well for a variety of factors. But again, not limiting it to just attraction. We lose our ability to grow our existing tax base and our businesses because they are looking for a variety of opportunities.
And if I may, councilmember, I just wanted to add that the principal, the larger benefit here is free parking. And outside of the downtown, you already enjoy free parking. So in D-10, there's no business that I'm aware of anyway that pays for parking. So we don't believe that it would be a poaching opportunity.
So I think, Lee, your comment about that if it's an expansion, that's a different story than a business relocating. And I don't know how you will, unless you monitor it very closely, that you are really getting an expansion. Yes, then that's fine. That's like a new business. That's a new addition to the business. But I think if we just leave it the way it is, I consider that that is not the right thing to do. Because we should be only giving this incentive when we are getting growth from outside of San Jose. A new business farming anywhere is fine. If it doesn't exist today, that's okay. Then it's not getting poached from anywhere else. And a brand-new business or a business from outside of San Jose would be what I would want it to be the case.
I would appreciate that. And of course, councilmember, that's a policy call that the council can make. I would say it does limit the incentive quite a bit. Because I don't think OED's staff is to get a company to move from one district to another district. It's, the expansion opportunity is about finding a small company that has two or three employees that may need to expand the number of employees and needs the type of environment of an urban campus that downtown San Jose provides to attract that type of talent and to grow. And there's different economic factors that make that very difficult. Case in point, the parking. And so this helps that. So that's a call that the council can totally make to just have it as an attraction tool. But I would say I do believe it does limit the flexibility and the intent of the overall incentive.
I think if the goal is to attract new businesses, then I don't think it really affects that flexibility. I would like it to be restrained, that it should be a new business or new business from another city to be the case. Because then it's true growth and incentive is justified. Otherwise, our dollars are not going at the right place, so.
Thanks, councilmember. Any other comments or questions beyond that?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment in that we should put the restriction that this incentive is available to the new business and the businesses from outside of San Jose. The new business anywhere, a brand-new business farming anywhere, could be originating from San Jose or a business which is in existence, but an existing business from within San Jose relocating, the incentive should not be available.
Councilor Torres?
I do not accept it. Thank you.
Okay. Maker of the motion doesn't accept the friendly amendment. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a substitute motion then, please.
I'm not hearing a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm going to move on to Vice Mayor Kame.
Thank you so much. I do think that, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Torres, the mayor, and those who are part of the memo. I think that it's something that's really needed. One of the things I, you know, and maybe, I know it's going to come back to CED, but one of the things I think that would be helpful is, and it was brought up by San Jose Jazz on the Downtown Amenities Development Fund. You know, in previous You know, in previous budgets, we were given activation funds and, you know, can use it whatever, however, to activate in your district or, you know, I'd use mine to activate downtown. And I thought that that was very helpful. And I think that we have to find ways of thinking about this. Maybe it isn't today, but I just wanted to, you know, sort of like have you start thinking about something that would have, you know, sort of a way of developing these amenities. I'm delighted that Santana Row is in my district, but, you know, we can sort of share, what are the things that work? Things like the atmosphere and feeling that you get when you go to San Pedro Square, right? And so as we start thinking about what are the things that attract people to come together is something that I think we can get better at. I mean, we know what the elements are. We just need to figure out, okay, how do we become more intentional to make it happen? Because once people hear about it, you know, it becomes very popular. And we have seen success with San Pedro Square, Little Italy, and there are little parts here and there. If we could just kind of like bring it all together, I think that we would be successful. So I just want to put out there to consider that as you're bringing stuff forward for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you. I'm really excited to see a downtown incentive program, and I'm all in favor of it, although I'm not sure it goes far enough, as Nathan, you and I have talked about. I look forward to whether it works or not, but I think there may be other concerns. I'm listening to the small businesses here, and I agree that we need to activate the space in San Jose, and we need to make it someplace that people want to come to work and live and thrive. Businesses come to downtown San Jose for a lot of different reasons, but one of the reasons is, or one of the reasons they stay is because there's things to do. There's great restaurants, you can get your haircut, you can go to a bar after hours, you can walk around the parks, you feel safe. All of those things are factors. So we need to make sure that we have the amenities. They go together. The bringing tenants down into San Jose, they go with the activated space. One isn't successful without the other. You want the people who come here to then stay here and spend their dollars here. So I'm all for this because it does infuse or work to attract new businesses downtown. And I'm not really concerned about businesses from all over San Jose moving down here because I think there's reasons people move down here, and they don't. They're going to be, stay in District 9 because of the free parking, because it's closer to their schools, a lot of other reasons. They live and work in that area. But I'm concerned, because this only affects new tenants moving into San Jose, I'm concerned about current tenants. So what I would like to see when you come back to CED is, I'd like you to think out of the box, as you've done with this, and think of a way that we can incentivize new, current tenants to stay here and renew their leases or expand their leases. What can we do to help current tenants out? And something, so you're coming back in June to CED, maybe you can have that included in the report then. And I'd like you to take a look at tenant improvements and waiving the permit fees for tenant improvements. Because that, while the parking fee is great and the business license tax is good, I think the tenant improvements, the permits to get tenant improvements can be expensive and may be a deterrent to someone who wants to move down here. And also the timing, moving through the tenant improvement process, and just the overwhelming idea, okay, I'm moving downtown, what do I have to do to move downtown? So I'd love to see us expand our sphere of how we're looking at this. I think it's really important that we bring people down. There's no question about it. We want our restaurants to thrive. We want our other businesses that depend on the restaurant business to survive. We want our employees to be happy. Our employees, we want them to walk around and say, oh, I had lunch here, and now I went here, and now, and guess what, I'm going to go get my haircut over here. You know, oh, I'm going to buy clothes here, and I'm going to buy candles there. All of those opportunities make this an exciting place for people to be downtown. When you're in Dublin, I just gave my Dublin report, you cannot go five feet without seeing lots of activation, restaurants, bars, retail, huge retail centers. So I'm not saying we're Dublin. Be great if we were, but we're not. I'd love to see us strive to be more active and figure out how we can do that. So I don't know if, you know, I know there's a, can I include that? What I, I see your memo, and it says three months before. Can we, three months is too close to the end of the program? I'd rather see these things that I'm just asking for to come back in June, when they do the report to CED. Would that be acceptable, that the June report include incentives for retention, a review of tenant improvements permits, how we might be able to streamline the process?
Yes, I'll accept.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it okay with the secondary? Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this, but let's make it bigger. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. Let's go to Councilwoman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. And great comments, Councilwoman Foley. We often find ourselves in a difficult position as the way we construct our council in San Jose, because we think of ourselves sometimes as competitive with one another instead of synergistic about what's best for the city of San Jose. We often think of ourselves as being first about what's happening in our district and then second what's happening everywhere else. That becomes particularly difficult when it comes to downtown. The only way we can be a great city is if we have a great downtown, period, full stop. So I've even had these thoughts about how does this affect tenancy in North San Jose, North San Jose, which has a lot of vacancy and has a lot of manufacturing potential. I would hope to think that this is not cannibalistic, but beneficial to the entire city to improve downtown while also continuing to work on filling those manufacturing positions in North San Jose, which will have different, very different types of tenancy than the types of tenancy we're talking about here. But again, the only way San Jose can be great is if people are down here when there's a Sharks game and they can leave their office and go to the Sharks game. Or if they're here and they want to go to San Pedro for lunch, that will be great for the city of San Jose, even though we'd like to build some of that vibrancy in other parts of the city as well. The small businesses that are opening to provide services in our districts, restaurants and service providers are still going to be needed in those parts of the city regardless of what we do downtown. The real question is, what currently prevents people from coming downtown when they have a business like this? I'm not sure this is it, but this is something we're trying. We're doing a two-year pilot, obviously, so we'll know if this is having a difference. I hope that as part of that evaluation, we'll also be having an analysis of where these businesses are coming from. Certainly, if we see that it's simply just moving deck chairs around the city of San Jose, then it's not what we're looking for, but hopefully it will be something other than that, and we'll see that there's actually some improvement in what we're doing economically for the city as part of that evaluation. So I'm excited to support this. I want to just ask a question about one of your, the last thing on your page, which says incentives over $100,000 need to come back to council. So each time a tenant signs a contract, does that mean there would have to be a council, just a notification or approval, or what will be the process going forward?
Thank you so much. So if a incentive is valued at $100,000 or more, the city staff will need to do a disclosure to the public with a sort of return on investment analysis. It's pretty simple. We do these for the downtown high-rise incentive program, actually. And there is a public, technically, there is a public hearing as part of that. So the, you know, $100,000 is a lot, but once you do start getting into like lots of parking passes, you can hit that number. And so, you know, it will be a good problem to have if we start bringing those forward. And you will also be able to use that as an opportunity to kind of see a little bit more about this.
It's a sunshine and a notification, but not a council action requirement.
Yeah.
It'll be approved on some report that we receive as a council, but not an action.
I would defer to Nora on how it would show up on your agenda.
It's a council approval, but of course Nora will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll turn to Nora. I think there was a question, maybe we can repeat it for Nora, on the incentive. And I believe that's a council policy, is it not? Or is it mini-code? Where does that exist?
AB 562, Assemblymember Glazer passed in 2014.
Did he put anything in for inflation? It's just fixed.
No, I'm very familiar with the government code section, and there is not an inflation adjuster in it.
Wonderful. See more and more of those in the years ahead. Okay, Nora? Did we have a follow-up question just for Nora specifically?
I think it was just to confirm the way it will show up on the agenda. And I think because it is a public hearing, it will not be a consent item.
That would be correct. And yeah, and any changes that come out of this will come back for the second hearing. And I believe further the councilmember asked that it would require council approval, and I believe it does. Yes.
We will try to streamline those memos so they can come to you quickly.
Thank you.
So I'll just correct staff. Thank you.
All right. We'll make it as painless as possible. Okay. And Councilmember, did you have any other questions? Okay. I appreciate your comments on the importance of downtown for our entire city and that we're learning, right? This is an incremental but meaningful additional step we're taking. Councilman Candelas.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are going to be brief. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their leadership on this incentive program and staff for bringing this forward. You know, again, the more people we bring to downtown, the more vibrancy we have, the better we are as an entire city, even, you know, us out in District 8, Evergreen East, San Jose. And, you know, the block parties are a perfect example of that, of bringing people to downtown. The Jazz Fest, a perfect opportunity to bring people downtown. So now, how do we do it Monday through Friday during the day? And I think I'm excited for this. And to Councilmember Foley's point, I look forward to seeing what kind of process improvements we can bring towards the, my barber, for example, is opening up a school in downtown San Jose, and he's going through that process now, and I hear it. I mean, I sit in his chair for 45 minutes, so I understand the pain that comes. So I look forward to, while I'm not on CED, I look forward to reading that report to keep apprised of what we can do as a city to look forward, because, again, anything we can do to foster a positive small business ecosystem will make our entire city better. So no, I appreciate staff's work and my colleagues' leadership on this item.
Awesome. Thanks for those comments. I know we're about to vote. I want to just add a few comments, and then we'll get to the vote here. Once again, I really want to thank Jennifer, Lee, Nancy, Nathan, everybody who blogged, everybody who participated in shaping these incentives. I've made decisions multiple times in my career on where to locate an office for small teams, and there are a lot of factors. It's safety, cleanliness, costs, which this hit at, vibrancy in amenities, is it a place workers will want to come and spend time. I'd also highlight transit and transportation, mobility options, which is something we really have an abundance of in downtown and more to come, which is exciting, parking availability and so forth. So I really think the bets that we make on small businesses are some of the most important long-term bets we can make. I just want to remind folks that Zoom first came to Almaden here in downtown, pre-IPO, and it was only after several years that it became a household name, an anchor employer in our downtown. So betting on small business can be a real bet on our future as a city. Thank you for bringing the threshold down to 2,500 square feet. I think that's more inclusive, allows us to help more of our small businesses and entrepreneurs. I also appreciate the simplicity. I think we often tend to complicate things. The fact that you kept it really simple, two years free parking, two years no business tax, is really easy for us to deliver as a message. So I'm grateful for the clarity. And you all brought it back within just a few months of us collectively passing the June budget message where we talked about this. So appreciate the quick turnaround and getting this up and running. So just mostly thank yous. I did want to just quickly ask two things, very quickly. Nancy, Nathan, you mentioned the targeted marketing outreach strategy. Can you give us a little more context on what that would look like and how we may support you in that?
Nathan, we'll go ahead and take that.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So we'll be delivering some collateral. We actually have a call with our graphic designer this week to talk through what that looks like. And then, you know, we want to go on a roadshow and not just talk about this, but talk about like all the things. I think this is a news hook for us to kind of get in the door and get people excited to take a fresh look at us. The brokerage houses do their weekly sales meetings, you know, on certain days of the week, and we want to hit those and get five minutes at the top. We want to do, you know, some happy hours, some lunches with folks who are kind of in that industry to help them broadcast our message. So those are some of the things we're thinking about, and we're open to additional ideas.
Awesome. Especially focusing on those small businesses in Santa Clara and Sunnyvale, right? And then, I appreciate that you're going to get out to the brokerage community and make sure everybody's aware of this as one more talking point when they're talking to potential tenants. And then finally, just to Brendan's point and the letter from San Jose Jazz, you know, I think we'll have conversations certainly through the next budget process on where, we need to see what our budget situation is, but what money we have to invest. Obviously, we're making some investments in 2026 in block parties and more marketing, but I just, if we could talk a little more about vibrancy and amenities, and I think we're all cognizant of Brendan's very good point, which is, it has to be a draw. Why do people want to be downtown? Can you share just a little bit of things we're currently working on that you both see potentially moving the needle over the next year or two?
Mayor, thank you very much, and I have to commend Brendan and Jazz Society and several of the other speakers in the audience. There's a consistent recognition that arts and culture bring vibrancy and interest. And there are multiple ways which council and the administration have considered, from increasing the share of TOT to investments in marketing, in creating new programming so there's yet more over a greater period of the year. So there are a number of things that make a lot of sense. And as you said, Mayor, thinking about them in light of what is possible through our budget.
Okay. So I think that's some food for thought for the council as we consider ramping up our efforts to prepare for 2026, but also more recurring and lasting investments when we get into the next budget cycle. I think we're all cognizant that we need to do more there. Obviously, our budget is constrained, so it's an important conversation, important set of questions for us to keep top of mind. I see I may have sparked a question for Councilman Cohen.
You did, and I apologize, but it's a comment and question I kind of wanted, I had wanted to ask and then forgot about until he mentioned transit. And I think I spoke to you about this when we had the briefing on this. Obviously, our goal as a city and our environmental goal is trying to minimize driving into downtown and driving, and we're using parking as the incentive here. And I think, I understand why, and I think it's a good thing to do in the short term. But I was curious whether we might consider trying to partner with transit agencies to provide a transit incentive as part of this, maybe in the future or maybe when we come back, so that we are not just saying free parking, but you'll also get free VTA passes for your employees if you come downtown.
Very much agree with that idea and happy to report, I'm sure you experienced, that the electrified Caltrain is doing very well on the evening and on the morning trains. And so to keep that chugging along, pardon the pun, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, and to get people using it in the other direction, because many people are going north, we might be able to provide some kind of incentive for businesses that come downtown to have discounted rides on electrified Caltrain to get into San Jose. So just something for us to think about as we try to improve this program going forward.
Awesome. Great point. Okay, I see we sparked another comment or question. Councilman Dawn?
I just got a comment. I just want to say thank you, staff. I read the report, and it is very clear that you had pros and cons, and you have how many parking space, what the implication of cost over the two years. And I love a report like that. It helped me make a very clear decision to support this measure. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, councilmember. Thank you again to staff. Let's vote. Great. Thank you all. We are on to open forum. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any comments?
Pacheco, please come on down.
All right.
I guess last time I came here, maybe I spoke too much from an emotional point of my heart, right? So maybe it was too much for the city council here or even you guys to process it, right? So with that being said, I guess more of a business and, you know, where's the humanity, right, in this chamber, right, the integrity? I think I've reached out to everybody multiple times, I mean, since January, if not even five years prior, pro bono. I mean, back-to-back-to-back-to-back, over and over, repeatedly, repeatedly emails, even to the point where last time I was cut off and didn't even get the full two minutes. That was the power that Samuel de la Dora La Cardo has. And it's mind-boggling that when you hear people say they're not for corruption or they're not for crime, whether they're abusing their power when they hold a power to do whatever they want. And that's exactly what happened. It went as far as to the district attorney. You could tell them a whole story, and they're still going to fish a district attorney's mindset. Everybody's a criminal, right? Nobody's innocent. And when you even label and put the power of Samuel La Cardo behind that, right, his whole face expression and demeanor changes, right? So obviously, we talked, right? So it's just to be straight up a friend of, you know, everybody and man-to-man, right? I get, I'm poor, right? I get that, you know? That's fine. It is what it is, right? They do beat me down, beat me down until I just.
That's your time?
So with that being said, when you say.
Your time is up.
I still want to say, when you've been a man.
Sir, your time's up.
Say what you.
Okay. Thanks for your comment. I appreciate your comment.
Back to council.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. We're adjourned.